So I think like, yeah, secret.
I'll make sure, don't want you to. You got any glitches, right?
Uh.
Well, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting here on February 10th, 2025. Please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance is to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, it is nice to see everyone here this evening. I will just have a few opening remarks. This is a meeting of the school board in public for the purpose of conducting the school corporation's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. But we time for public participation as indicated by Agenda Item Number Three. Our mission: We inspire innovation, empower potential, enriching our world and our vision. Goshen Community Schools, Elkhart County School District of Choice. Item 1.4, Approval of the Agenda. Do we have any revisions to the agenda?
No.
Okay, the agenda is approved as presented. And Item 1.5, Approval of the Minutes from our January 27th, 2025 regular meeting. Board members, do we have any revisions to those minutes? Here none, they are approved as presented as well. Moving on to Item Two, Recognition. Student and Staff Recognition. Ms. Schreiner.
Yes, we have stumbled recognition this evening. I would first like to invite Kaya Savelup to be recognized. She is the recipient, one of three, in Elkhart County students, a recipient of the Elkhart County Lilly Endowment Community Scholarship, which is just an amazing honor.
Sure.
So Natalie, did you obviously have to have the academics, but you also had the interview. It's convenience. So, well done, Natalie.
Thank you.
Kendall has been awarded the Football Academic All-State Award. So again, not only about athletics, but just those academic achievements. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And do you have plans after?
Not yet.
Not yet? Kind of up in the air. It's still that time of year. You still have time. No pressure. Congratulations.
You're fancy.
All right, and next Ivan from... Come on up. Ivan just played in a wrestling state competition and received seventh place in her weight class. And so finally now you're resting, right? Yeah, well, congratulations. That's great.
And that was our first year for...
For the inaugural year?
Wrestling tournament. So thanks, Coach. Appreciate you and the team.
Thank you.
Elsa Alstom-Berkhiser, come on up. Elsa has been accepted into the Indiana Junior All-State Orchestra, right? And so you had to audition for that? For that? Yeah, congratulations. We go. We are a bar girl. Come on up. And we're all very busy. I'm always there from here. And finally, we are here. And these three have been accepted into the Indiana Music Education Association Honor Band, which means they would have had some accolades that their teachers recognized and recommended them. And so now you'll be playing alongside of other students who are very talented, by my understanding. So congratulations. And last but not least, Mr. Cox, come on up. And this is a long title for an award, but it's a short one. Mr. Cox received the Dr. William P. Foster's Project Community Development Award for North Central Division. But my understanding is this is very impactful. So where does it pack for our community? Yep, and I'm trying to know if you would could tell us a little bit about how we got that.
So there are six representatives of representatives from around the United States and I'm from North Central. We get scholarship money for our students. We get instruments. And then we're allowed to select them on a list of people that can come in and connect our group. So, yep.
Well, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Well, we congratulate each and every one of you for representing Goshen Community Schools wonderfully. Thank you, Mr. Cox. He's a great instructor. This is your opportunity to depart us if you so would like. If not, you are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. It's going to be riveting, so we do encourage you to stay. And as we are transitioning here, we will move to Item Three on our agenda, which is Public Comment. So we'll just give it a minute here. And our first speaker will be Mr. Glenn Knoll.
Glenn Knoll, Goshen. Always have to have a prop. This prop here is the Indiana Constitution. It's a little booklet that is printed actually just down the road here, Velpert, by Hoosier Voices. This is one that I think is very important. This is the one that most people don't know. It's one that should be gathered and used by our social studies. I think, well, I like to call it history, but now they call it social studies. Whatever. It covers a multitude of sins. So, and this is the one that seven of you sort uphold. This is the one that I plan on using most, because this is one that is not known. Most people don't know it exists. And ignorance is real strong. When that happens, mistakes are made. So I'm just saying that you might want to get a copy of it. Make sure that you don't violate it, because most people can easily look up the U.S. Constitution. It's everywhere. You have to hunt for any state one. So I'm giving you advice. You take it for what it's worth. I would look at it. I would study it. Make sure that I'm not violating it, because like I said, this is the one I'm going to hang my hat on and make sure that we get changes on this board before the next election. So I'm going to be easy and let you guys get done with this meeting. The last meeting was nice and short. I appreciated that. It was nice. You can tell who was running it then. But anyway, so if I can't get a dig in, I'm not happy.
I'm happy. I can be very expensive for a second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. All right. And that will end our public comment this evening. We'll go on next to Super Tennis Reports. Mr. DeVois.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll start out, and Dr. Bob Evans has a couple of updates for the board.
Right. So in your packet, you'll see the end of the year financial report, just going over a few highlights on the Education Fund, where we did receive more revenue than we budgeted, because there were different revenue that came in. So that was a good thing. We expended 98% of our monies. That was budgeted. And approximately 80% of all of those expenditures were for employee expenses on the Education Fund. In the Operating Referendum Fund, we received 96% of the revenue that we budgeted, simply because of tax rules and how they came in. 100% of those expenditures were for personnel costs. And as you know, this operating referendum will end in December of 2026. The last point that I'll mention, it's the Operations Fund. It was 92% expended of the budget. Approximately 60% of that was for personnel. Did you have questions concerning the end of the year financial report?
I guess from your opinion, I mean, does this change your focus at all, as you might consider the budget for this coming year? We're doing, we're just being good stewards of the money? I mean, just?
Right. I think we're on a good track. I like to continue with how we're operating. And of course, we passed the budget, and I intend to follow the budget that the board passed.
We appreciate that.
I really don't have a choice, do I?
Yeah.
Good answer, Bob.
A couple of side notes. We have turned in our Form Nine, our annual financial report. And I anticipate that our state auditors will be, well, we're meeting with them on Wednesday. And then I anticipate they'll come and start their audit within a short period of time before the next board meeting.
And we did have the kickoff meeting officially last Wednesday with them.
Right, right. Yes.
I just had two questions. One was about the Debt Service Fund, where we did spend more than was budgeted. What was behind that change in the expenditure versus the budget? And when we spend more than that, where does that necessarily come from?
We did have a cash balance in our Debt Service Report. And the reason that we expended more is because we added debt as the year went on. So when we passed the budget in this, well, the fall of 2023, we passed more debt. So then we had to pay that debt in '24. And so there was, the expense was there, but we did have the cash balance to cover it.
And then the other question was about the Operating Referendum Fund. We were quite a bit lower on our expenditures than we were the budget on that. Is that because of cuts as we're trying to wean ourselves off of that Operating Referendum?
That's exactly the track we're trying to do. We're trying to minimize our expenditures in Operating Referendum. Try to wean ourselves off, if you will.
Right.
And is it also fair just to add on to that, because the assessed values have increased, I mean, it is raising more than we had predicted as well?
That is accurate as well. Yes.
Which I know that's a contentious point right now, assessed values.
Yep. And so, Board, one thing I would encourage you to look at Senate Bill One. It has initial runs, I should say, has our school district losing up to $3.8 million in '26, and then up to $4.6 million in '27, and up to $5.4 million in '28. So, initial runs, try not to get too worked up about it, but as that question you asked becomes even more important in light of what potentially could happen with Senate Bill One. So, we'll come back around and talk to you some more about Senate Bill One as well. So, there's an initial run hot off the press this morning from one of our advocate organizations. Anything else, Bob?
Nope.
If it's okay, Mr. President.
Keep rolling.
We will go to Student Achievement and Commitments. And Dr. Metcalf has some updates for you.
Hey, we're going to do a quick update on attendance. We were past the second nine weeks into the first semester. Just as a reminder that last year, at the end of the year, we had a 48% of our students were here 94% of the time or more. Two charts that you see up there right now show at the October 18th, which was the end of the first quarter, we were at 65% of our students, having 94% or better. As of 1/16, which was the end of the nine weeks, we were at 63%. Not too much of a decline in that time. So we're pretty pleased about that. However, we also realize that cold and flu has hit everyone pretty hard the last couple of weeks. And so we'll have to wait until the end of the next nine weeks to see where we are with that. The other thing we do is we, even though the state looks at 94%, you know, in our research, we found that a lot of researchers say that nine, or to impact the educational piece, 90% is enough. So we also track how many of our students were at 90%. Now, if you remember, at the end of last year, for 90%, we were at 70%. 70% of our students were there 90% or more. That means they missed, they missed less than 18 days, 18 days or less. Currently, according to what, as of 10/18, into the first quarter, we had 84% of our students were there at 90% or greater. And as you can see, we're at 83. So it went down just a little bit also. So we feel we are, our attention to attendance is hopefully paying off. And we thank everyone for their support.
Can I ask how this relates to attendance? I know Count Day by the state was on Monday. How does that impact us? Because I know countywide, there was significant absenteeism because of illness. How does that impact things?
So the state has changed that, I forget how many years ago. It used to be how many people were in attendance that day. It's actually how many people had attended prior to February 3rd. So if they were on our enrollment rules as of February 3rd and had attended prior to February 3rd, they count. So it should not have made any impact on the actual enrollment numbers.
We're still certifying those enrollment numbers. We think we're down maybe 30 students. It's hard to say.
Well, I think one school is down at least 30 students, let's put it that way. So I would anticipate us being probably in the 50, 50 range, hopefully.
We'll hear about that probably at a future meeting.
Yes, you will. As well as you'll hear about behavior and course performance. I think next time we think we have some course performance data.
And this last chart is just by, when we look at the 90%, the nine, right, so currently that would mean nine or fewer absences, because we look at 90% right now at the midyear. These are the grade levels. And you can tell that, you know, kind of not, as we would not anticipate, as students get older, the absences get become great. So elementaries, kindergartens, first grade, then it kind of shrinks down to third, fourth, and fifth, third, fourth, and fifth, and then comes back up. But all those put together equal that, that 83% attendance rate at 90% or better. And that's it.
Ed, you climb your update for the board?
So one of the other pieces we're looking to record on very soon is our behavior, student behavior, number of referrals to the office. We have been putting, last year, we did it through an enormous spreadsheet that mined the data on a daily basis. We have purchased a EdgeClimber, which is a program that not only takes our Skyward data, but also integrates it with all our assessment data. And so that a teacher, down to the teacher level, they can quickly see how their students are doing, not only attendance, behavior, academically, all in one place, to make it much easier for our students to, our teachers to meet the needs of our students. We have been working with EdgeClimber this fall. We've done some final, I think we're in the final, Mr. Jimenez, I know we have been kind of overseeing that, but I think we are in our final.
We're ready to train our principals and some leaders, some instructional leaders along with that.
So our goal is to pull that behavior data out of it. So we'll be doing that in the near future.
Yeah, I just noticed that. Sorry.
Okay. Any questions for, if that's okay?
One quick question. I'm a little concerned about the absenteeism right in the high school and other seniors. Is there a plan to reverse that?
Well, there's a plan to mitigate it. That has been a trend that has been, as far back as the data has, as we've been able to track it, that has kind of been the trend. So our goal is to lessen the amount of students at each level as they go up. I don't think we can ever fully, fully get everyone there, especially as we start thinking in the future about, you know, part of reversing it is making school more engaging. I think our pathways piece that you're going to hear more about next, later on in the meeting, will be one of the big steps at the junior high and the high school, as kids can kind of start experiencing and start thinking about what I am able to do that is beyond just normal textbook lecture, problem solve method, but more hands-on with, and CTE focused. So our goal is to make school as engaging as possible. The high school and their counselors are working on attendance. They do keep, they do keep track, and they do contact those parents. The one thing we have not been able to do is get to, though, because that attendance is, anyone who was there, you had to be there at least half day. So if you missed three days, you're, or three periods, or four periods, you're in that data, even though you might have been there at the beginning of the day for two periods. And so they're trying to do a better job tracking that. High school, and junior high, just because of the complexity of the periods, sometimes makes the, makes the data a little more difficult to really drill down into, were they there all day? Were they there half day? And we, we only notify parents once during the day, because we, we don't want to do it after every period. So there are some students who, for whatever, one reason or other, might decide after third period, they are, they are done, or they don't attend. Parents would not receive necessarily, from my understanding, talking to Ms. Demire, a notification of that absence, because they only do that after first, after first period, I believe. And we also don't not want to flood parents with, if you know your student's absent, we don't want to give, you don't want to get seven notifications for each period each day. So we're, it's a fine line we're trying to walk, but they are, they are working. Mrs. Baker, Dr. Baker, I should say, has done, has done a great job at junior high of making that number of students who aren't meeting the 90 or 94% smaller. So I think, you know, we're just going to continue to do the work that we've done and keep moving on with the plan that the schools have created. We've kind of left this, a lot of this in their hands. And I think we're seeing from the overall that, that the schools are taking it seriously. And it is making a difference.
You'd said that last year we were at 70%, now we're 80%. Is that correct?
For the, for the 90%, yes. At the end of the year, we had 70% of our students who were, who had, who had missed less than 18 days, 18 days or less. We are currently at 83% of our current students who have missed, and they would have, it's still the 90%, so they would have had to miss nine or fewer days in this, in this first half of the year.
Was most that improvement in the elementary side or in those higher grades?
There was some improvement, there was some improvement in the higher grades, specifically the junior high. The junior, junior high has done a really good job in the sixth and or seventh and eighth grade of really trying to incentivize and to get kids there. I think we had that report of the students who went to the, from Prairie View and Waterford, who also went to the Notre Dame women's basketball game, as, and we had over 400 kids there as an incentive. The other schools are working with Mr. Sheets to set up other incentives. So I think those are, are working.
All of our schools. I think all of our schools are contributing to the improvement.
That was you. I thought it was me. Even the, even the high schools, even the high schools in a couple of grades, you know, in the ninth and 10th grade are better than they were last year. 11th and 12th grade are close to the same.
Okay, thank you. Next up is our Operational Excellence Commitment. So, Bob, I know you have a list of summer projects you'd like to share with the board.
Sure. Here's just a few of the projects we'll be doing this summer. There will be other projects such as painting and, and minor repairs. But some of the bigger projects would be the HVAC equipment at the junior high will replace about, maybe a little more than half of what we'll eventually do. The junior high will also, we're working on a small concession building to go back by their football field. That will service all of their athletics out there. Junior high will have their track reconstructed. We're trying to get that in place with a little bit of work to make sure we get that done in time. The high school will have, will start work on their HVAC and mechanical air handlers in the gym. They're trying to improve the air handling in the gym. And that will also include adding air conditioning to the gym. The band parking lot will be done this summer, as well as the courtyard at Model Elementary, classroom doors at Model Elementary, and section of roof at Waterford will be replaced this summer.
And one thing you jumped over is the high school soccer. They're getting new press boxes.
Thank you. I didn't know that, yeah. High school soccer would have a new press box and dugouts installed as well.
More bleachers, because they need it.
And bleachers, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Next up is our People Commitment. And I guess Tracy, you have an update about a recruitment fair?
Yeah, we have, I'm in the midst of planning a recruitment fair for, sorry. Yeah, we're in the midst of planning a recruitment fair for March 4th and 6th. Fourth will welcome teachers in our lower grades, K to six. And on the 6th, we'll welcome potential teachers for seventh through 12th. So we're in the midst of trying to plan a recruitment fair that will bring in candidates for positions we may have open. Looking forward to seeing who we can get through the doors.
Particularly special ed teachers we're looking for. We've done a listening tour with our current special ed teachers to find out what would they be interested in staying at Goshen for, and why do they stay at Goshen? And then also, what would attract folks to Goshen to come here to be a special education teacher? That's going very well.
Yep.
Thank you, Tracy. That concludes our reports. All right. Thank you. We'll move on to Item Five, which is Board Committee Reports. Do board members have anything to share about the committees you sit on?
I've got some legislative news.
Go ahead.
Couple of things. This is Senate Bill 287. This is Senator Doriot. This would require candidates for school board to be, claim a political party and have a primary. So that'd be a change. I believe that's being voted on probably as we speak. It's still in committee, but that's being discussed. Last meeting, I talked about school accountability. Going back to the AF Accountability Letter Grade that was around before COVID, and they, they bypassed it, and that's being discussed, being brought back. That's in committee also. This would affect, this bill is HB 1136. It's in the House. This bill would provide that if more than 50% of students have legal settlement in a school corporation, were enrolled in a school that is not operated by the school corporation, school corporation must be dissolved in all public schools, must be transitioned to charters. So basically, if a school corporation doesn't have 50% of its students going to that school, that corporation, they would be made into a charter. So that's in the House. That's, I believe in committee also. There's five corporations that are targeted. I think Goshen is well below that 50% threshold, so.
Above or above. Which one's it, above or below?
It's above.
Above, above. And that's it from the legislative side.
Thank you. Other committee reports this evening?
I've got a play at Music Council on January 29. I don't think I forwarded minutes yet, but I'll forward those to you and kind of get a rundown of what we talked about. They had fundraising updates, Treasury report, like normal. Really focused on community engagement. I don't know, has anybody served on the music committee before? I know Jose has. I think that, I'm amazed at the level of our music programs. And when you go to one of these meetings, you realize what the needs are to make something like this work. I mean, even, you know, nationally recognized in a lot of our areas. And it feels like a lot of times when, when the music needs something, we're finding, we're trying to find, you know, how to have a bake sale to make it happen. And know, how to have a bake sale to make it happen. And I think we need to kind of change that narrative about how we're supporting the music program. And so as I'm sitting into these meetings, you know, we're brainstorming and trying to come up with ideas on how we can better support the music program. It includes, you know, capital expenses. They've got band uniforms, instruments, and, and these things are not cheap. And we're looking at $100,000 or more for these types of things. I think the last time they had new uniforms is 2005. In 20 years they've been doing this. So those are the kind of things we hear in these meetings, like how do we get to the next level? And looking at, just like we do in everything else in the school, looking at corporations the same size that have the same programs and how are they doing it and how are they able to survive? And so over the next few months, I'd like to really try to dive into that and bring some of that to the forefront to this group in, in this meeting and emails and however I can to try to figure out a way to, to, to make that kind of a priority. I think that when we look at the sports, it's easy to see when we do improvements, whether it be on the track field or the soccer field. We just heard of some improvements that are happening that obviously the schools need. But I think sometimes we're not talking about this music program and, and I'd like to see us have more conversation about that.
Appreciate it, Mario. Thank you.
On top of that, sorry, one more. We just had the, the state vocal was a couple weeks ago. We did orchestra and band, I think this past weekend. And then coming up we'll have state, I think the 22nd is vocal and then March 1st is instruments. And I think I read we had over 270. Is that right? 270?
Orchestra, yeah. 270, 70 individual performances, which is a great kind of.
Yeah. So, yeah, big groups. Yeah. Oh, and the musical Brigadoon. So those, those tickets will be on sale, I think to the public on Friday, the 14th. And there's two weekends this year in March. So, yeah.
Good.
That's it.
Jose?
I haven't had the meeting yet, but I do want to remind the board that the Goshen Community School Foundation still needs.
Yep, that was next. You're good. I appreciate it. So that, that brings up any other committee reports?
This isn't really a committee report. I did get the chance to go to the MSBA conference at the beginning of last week and I got to go speak to our federal representative in DC about some of the future federal things that are changing right now in regards to education. That was an interesting conference to go to.
Maybe in the next meeting or something, you can just maybe, if that, if that's all right.
I'd be happy to. I know it's not a committee report.
Yeah, no, it'd be good to hear a little, if there's a few things to, to highlight.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Redevelopment meets tomorrow, so we'll have an update next month. And so as Jose was saying, the only committee we currently do not have a representative on is the Goshen Community Schools Foundation. It is a meeting they meet tomorrow, which is the second Tuesday at 7:30 in the morning. That foundation represents donors that have given money to the things for different programs then that can apply for within our district. So it's a, it's a great committee to be a part of. Many of us have, have served on it at different times. So we just, we do need to find a representative for that. So they do meet both in person and virtually. So that's always, if that's a concern. But I know 7:30 can be challenging mornings. So I know that's.
I'm not assigned any committees, but there is, like that time.
It's tough.
There is nowhere I can do it because I'm always getting ready to leave at that point.
Yeah. And that's, that's the hard part is getting kids out of school if you have kids going to school. It's right at that time. And that's the impact for me personally as well. So, so just, I would ask just everyone, just, you know, take another gander if there's a way. If not, we'll figure something out and we'll communicate to the foundation. So.
Is it once a month?
It's once a month. Yeah. So, so it's something to think about. It's pretty low key, you know, outside of helping with the trivia night in October and then approving the different grants that might be requested from educators in the district. So something to think about. We can talk about it if you got questions, anybody. So, all right. We're already past what time the last meeting ended, so we'll keep going here.
Not yet. You've got time.
We still got time.
We hustled.
All right. Next is our consent agenda items. Item 6.1, approval of accounts payable dated February 10th, 2025 and payroll dated January 24th, 2025. 6.2, gifts and donations. 6.3, 2025 Goshen High School marine biology trip and 6.4, personnel. Anything to highlight from our consent agenda? All right. Hearing none. The consent agenda items are approved as presented. All right. Moving on here, we have no action items this evening, so we will go to discussion items and item 7.1, CTE updates and revisions, Mr. Everingham. So I'm only 15 minutes later than I told you, so it's not too bad.
John, do you have 30 seconds?
Somebody really gave me a time limit. Mr. Waddell said something like 40 minutes. So I think I can do better than that. But appreciate the opportunity to, to speak in front of you guys tonight and tell you a little bit about what I've been up to. I know some of you here, but I don't know everybody here, but my name is John Everingham. I'm a proud 1994 Goshen High School graduate. I also started my teaching career here at Goshen High School for three years and then I kind of disappeared for a few years. And so I was off, uh, kind of in, in the world of education. I did a little coaching, but probably more important than that, got involved in career and technical education, spent some time as a CTE coordinator at the Calhoun High School, was hired as an administrator a little over 10 years ago at Impact Institute as the assistant CTE director. We oversaw 13 school districts at Impact and then I was hired as the CTE director at Lawa Sea. We rebranded there as Pathways CTE Cooperative and we do send some, some Goshen students over there. So I have a little bit of a specialized knowledge in career and technical education and, and kind of coming full circle here, being back at Goshen High School in November, kind of joined the team and really want to make sure that I thank Jim DuBois, Alan Metcalf and central office staff for kind of bringing me on. And I also thank Kathy Demire and the Goshen High School administrative staff. It's really been an amazing group to work with. So what I've been up to, I really came in in November, just really wanted to kind of get to know the lay of the land, get to know the people, the students, and, and really was patient in terms of having conversations and visiting with teachers, not just CTE teachers, but kind of all teachers. I think I made it through everybody, highlighted the ones that I've talked to, a lot of mornings in classrooms and, and certainly I thought that was a big step of kind of re-entering Goshen High School. But in taking a look at the lay of the land, really understanding what we're doing in terms of CTE at the high school, introductory classes, principals' classes, capstone opportunities, and then really kind of have been asked to kind of do a comprehensive local needs assessment. And so I think that's probably the majority of my time is taking a look at that. If you don't know what a CLNA report is, CTE directors across the state of Indiana, 53 school, 53 CTE districts in the state of Indiana, every other year, you have to do this boring, long CLNA report and some of it's a bunch of nonsense. I contacted the company that helped me through that as a CTE director and asked if we could kind of slim that down and really make it Goshen Community Schools, Goshen Community, Goshen High School specific. And that's what I'm currently working on right now. And so I'm hoping to present a proposal to Mr. DuBois, Mr. Metcalf before spring break. It's going to take a look at a lot of different things. It's going to take a look at the programming that we have, the career centers where we send students to. And I sent, I gave you a list of some of, of the options, not all of the options that are currently or soon to be offered half-day CTE programs. And so there, there are some things here at Goshen High School through their career scholarship accounts, things that we do kind of on our own. Goshen High School, we obviously send students to Pathways, CTE Cooperative in Syracuse, obviously send students to Elkhart area, Career Center in Elkhart. So that's, that's kind of what I've been up to. I heard Mr. Metcalf talk about increased engagement, graduation rates, dual credits, industry-recognized certifications. There is a lot in terms of CTE and what it can do for school districts. Again, 13 school districts at Impact. I've worked at four different school districts, Goshen, five. What I can tell you is, is that I, I might be a little biased, but certainly feel very blessed to be back home in, in Goshen. But I can tell you, in my opinion, in working with and being inside of 20 different school districts across northern Indiana, I can tell you that Goshen is a special place. And so somebody asked me, I really wanted to mention this tonight, but somebody asked me a question, what, what's been one thing that's been really good about you coming back and being inside the school and one thing that kind of stands out? And I said, almost immediately, I said talent. And I think there's an incredible amount of talent in terms of the people and that includes leaders, that includes teachers, and then clearly students. And so I think we have an amazing opportunity to kind of expand the presence of CTE at Goshen Community Schools, Goshen Community. And I think as we do that, you'll see increased engagement, graduation rates, the dual credit offerings in CTE and the industry-recognized certifications. All that stuff kind of goes hand in hand and kind of, kind of works, works together. So I'd love to answer any questions that you guys might have. I'm probably over my five minutes.
You're good.
Did I miss anything, Mr. DuBois?
I think you nailed it.
Well, I would say if you talk with passion like that, you can, you can keep going for a while. I mean, this, I mean, I'll say it's nice to have you home.
Thank you.
We're excited for the knowledge you're bringing to this and taking us really to that top level that we strive to be. So we're excited. I can say I'm personally excited about where we're going here. This is something that I think has been lacking, that we've done better over the last 10 years here, but we can still definitely keep going higher and higher.
Again, I've been at 20 districts across the state. I'm telling you, there's amazing opportunities here. Clearly increased, you know, resources, you know, might be needed in terms of, you know, the, the people that we have, the, the equipment. I've, I've also met with community partnerships and trying to stay on top of, you know, equipment to meet industry standards, you know, all that stuff. So there's, there's a lot of work to be done. I think, I think we're working real hard to kind of, to make sure the presence is, is kind of meets the industry standards there. So. Just to add on to what you guys said, I think it's improved if the class next forward.
John's been a, he's been a fantastic addition. As you might be able to tell, he's, he's very passionate and talented. And so to come together alongside our team, you have to put the right people together to get things done. I'm telling you, we have the right people and things are getting done. So I appreciate
Thank you.
the execution and planning that's going on right now.
John, I have a question.
Yeah.
Is there currently plenty of room in the Chandler Building for expansion? And you've got more than, you got space?
It, it, um, yes, currently. I would say yes. There, there's space in there, but I also think career and technical education should be a little different than, than maybe your normal average walking into the school building with, with hallways and lockers and it, it, I often say training facility. And so we oftentimes in the world of CTE, we don't use the word school. We use the word training facility. And so talk about dual credits and industry-recognized certifications, certifications that they can take right from the classroom, right into work. I will also add to the stigma of these CTE students that are, that are, that are destined to go straight to work. That's not necessarily what we do. We're not in the business of that. It's college and career readiness. So you've got robotics and engineering and, and all kinds of stuff that you're going to see these high academic students participating in CTE programs. You're also going to see students that certainly will get certifications. They may go to technical school, but there, there's going to be a grouping of students that certainly will have the skill that they need to go right to work. And so it's college and career readiness. And so I don't know if I answered your question there or if I went a little more.
Can I add?
Can I add to your answer?
Yeah.
Bob and I met with Don Ritter today and we talked about facilities. And I've had conversations with different board members, particularly Brad, about looking at a comprehensive kind of layout of what this campus looks like. And we've kind of come to a point where I think it's the right thing to do is figure, what's this campus look like? How does the entrance to the high school look? Where might CTE programs go? There's been even, John, there've been some conversations with us in regards to even opening up a auto mechanic shop maybe or an auto body shop downtown in an open spot or one of our business programs, half-day downtown somewhere. There's a lot of things that are potential, but we need a comprehensive plan. So know that we're working on getting something yet this spring. Maybe by June, we'd have something where we can say, you all can speak into it as we go, but also vote on it when it, like this is our multi-year plan now. Then we take pieces of it as we have the ability to take care of it and build as we go in a comprehensive kind of way instead of just a piecemeal here, piecemeal there, solve problems. So we're going to do some problem solving just to get us through next year a little bit. But after that, we, we hope to start laying it out according to our master plan for this site.
The local needs assessment will, will speak to that. So we'll say, these are the programs that, that we're offering right now. We have the space to do that. If you add, then this is what you're going to have to take a look at. And so I think putting that plan in front of everybody and, and taking a look at it and then obviously the powers be will decide and somebody execute.
We'll make sure we're including a lot of people and getting feedback into that work. So.
Any other questions for me?
We greatly appreciate it, John. We're looking forward to hear more about this in the coming months and keep moving forward.
Thank you. If it wasn't for Rick Meyer, I would agree with Mario.
All right. Now to most people's favorite part, closing items. 8.1, any miscellaneous administrative items tonight?
Our next meeting will be here in this room on February 24th at 6:00 PM. We have, our kindergarten enrollment has begun. So, you know, shake the bushes, get as many of these kindergartners in here to enroll as we can. It helps us plan for next fall. And then also we've, we have had 12 high school students who have won Gold Key, Silver Key, and Honorable Mention Scholastic Art Awards. And their artwork will be displayed at the South Bend Museum of Art at the Century Center now through the end of March. So get a chance to get over there, go see, and look up our Goshen kids artwork over there. Because like John said, we have a lot of talented kids and that includes artists. So.
Thank you. Any miscellaneous items from the board tonight? And that was in April, is that right? Yeah. So the National School Board Conference is in April. I don't know if any board member has interest.
We've gone in the past, I think we stopped a little bit for budget reasons, we decided to take a break.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah. It unfortunately falls over our spring break. Yeah.
An ISBA National Conference or the COSPAC Conference?
I would have to, I would have to check. I don't know.
I know there's one in Indiana for.
That's the one in, that's the one in April, I believe. So, yeah. So, yeah. I don't attend, I'm not planning to attend. I know that. So I guess if people have interest, let's just make sure we've got, if it's not too late to register yet. So I will say next Tuesday, Brandon and I will be attending the ISBA State House Day representing Goshen. So hopefully meet with a few of our local legislators. Usually Representative King is always good about meeting with us. So, but, so that'll be next Tuesday for the day. So. Anything else from the board?
If anyone is interested in going to the conference, please let me know.
Soon.
Like tomorrow. Like tomorrow.
Yep. No problem. And item 8.3, adjournment. Do we have a motion, please? Move second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, we adjourn.
Pretty good meeting, though. Forty-nine minutes.
Yeah, forty-nine minutes.
That is impressive.